I have been having issues getting it to connect to YouTube.
Well, it worked good last week because I watched.
Yeah, I can post it to YouTube afterwards, but I'm getting this internal error.
I see what.
It's been doing that to me for about the last half hour.
Well, I assume we can go ahead unless County Council says differently. Okay.
Okay, what's the problem? Real quick, Christie?
Um, YouTube, I'm not able to get it to the livestream to start.
So is this not being presented live?
No, I can post the video after what after it's done, it's being recorded.
Yeah, and I think that's fine. It's being recorded right now. Yes.
That's what we used to do prior to going to YouTube. I guess we're not live. There's no urgency to get started, except we don't want to take forever.
Well, if this doesn't work, I guess at the beginning of the meeting, Doug, you can acknowledge that we were unable to stream live due to technical issues, but the recording is being presented on YouTube.
I think that's a good idea, so we'll rock and roll. And good afternoon, everyone. This is Monday, August 2nd. It is 3:04 PM. And this is the regular meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners being held virtually. We have had technical difficulties and are not able to livestream this on YouTube. So a recording of this meeting will be made available as soon as possible after the meeting is concluded as a record of the meeting. And this actually was our standard practice prior to the COVID pandemic. So again, we apologize for not being available on YouTube, but this meeting is being recorded and will be available on our county website as has been a practice in the past. So with that, call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum. We have two commissioners, myself and Commissioner Hall. Commissioner Jacobson is excused this afternoon. And the first item on our agenda, as is usually the case with the first meeting of each month, we like to recognize those employees that have five years of service or anniversaries of five years of service. And we also like to recognize our new hires. So the first part of that, we'll recognize employees that have provided valued service to the county and our people. And first off, we have William Wright, five years in the Transit Department. Second, we have Colleen Chavaria. I knew I could do it. Who has been in our Health and Human Services Department for five years. And we have Nathan Fordham, also in our Health and Human Services Department for five years. And Ethan Nicely, a surveyor for 20 years. So combined there, we have 35 years of service. Each of these individuals will be getting a hand-signed certificate, hand-signed by all three commissioners, and a lapel pin recognizing the number of years that they have provided the service to the county. And again, much appreciated. And again, this is one of the ways that we try to recognize our employees and the service that they provide to to the county, to our communities, and to our people. So that is Jaylene on the call to do new hire introductions.
Yes, I am.
Welcome, Jaylene.
Thank you. So we did a few of our July folks earlier in the process a couple of weeks ago. So we just have four remaining that started in July. Melissa Cornwell, she's a clinical counselor for for the crisis team. Joseph Kirkham is a corrections deputy. David Collier is a human resources director. And Glenn Rawls is a victims assistant part-time.
Okay, we welcome all four of these and we'll make a special note that David Collier is the new Health and Humans, excuse me, the new human resources director and joined us, I believe it was one week ago today, and replaced Mike Herford, who had served our county well for about four and a half years. So welcome to all four of those individuals. And you don't have to wait five years to come to the next Board of Commissioners meeting. You're welcome anytime in the future. So with that, we'll move on to the adoption of the consent calendar. These are items of a routine nature or items that have come before the Board of Commissioners previously. At this time, if a commissioner or staff wish to highlight an item, they may do so. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
And I will second it, moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
That motion carries. Moving along, next we'll hear a COVID vaccination update. And this seems to be particularly pertinent in view of the significant increase in cases, not only state well, nationally, statewide, and locally. So with that, we'll turn it over to our interim Public Health Director, Florence Portow.
Thank you, Commissioner Hunt. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay, so August 2nd. Let's move to the next slide, please. Thank you. So I thought I would start with some data. Well, what we're going to do is likely going to go from state to local and then we're going to discuss the latest information that we received about the Delta variant. So as you can see, so this is the AP curve for the state of Oregon from kind of like the third week of June on to the last week of July. And seven-day moving average. And you can see how the trend is coming back up. And it's actually coming back up quite at a quite rapid pace. Next slide, please. So these are slides that were shared with with us on Friday by the Oregon Health Authority. And this slide particularly is showing you kind of how the Delta variant, which is the gray trend line, right, is totally like picking up and is really taking over against the other variants that were kind of like spreading and transmitting in Oregon. The B117 is the variant that we were used to in Oregon, otherwise known as the UK variant. And so now that Delta is taking over, as you can see, the UK variant, which is the blue line, is very interestingly, losing momentum while Delta is is climbing. Next slide, please. Okay, I wanted to also show you this slide because it's really looking at trends in hospitalizations. So this is a graph since May of last year, 2020. And but look at what we're doing right now. We had, you know, over the fall, we had this big surge. We're coming back down. We had the kind of like spring break, late April surge, coming back down, and now see how we're trending back up again. So that is, you know, a concern. Next slide, please. Okay, so here we're coming. So this is our slide that we like to show, you know, the comparing the AP curve for the state with the AP curve for our county, as you can see on the top chart. So this is Lincoln County. And we can definitely see on this even more pronounced that it was last week, the 47 cases in May, 57 in June, and then 103 in July. And what is very interesting is first you can see where they were more than doubled our cases from May to July. And almost doubled from June to July. But what was very interesting when I looked at the number, the numbers on Friday, I looked at the first two weeks of July. Believe we had like something like 31 cases. And the last two weeks of July, we had more than double the amount of cases. So that's showing you how the increase is is picking up, you know, it's it's the the upward curve is like getting really pretty steep, in my opinion. And so this is the data through today, already five cases. So next slide, please. Okay, so then I asked our epidemiologist to kind of look at what we were seeing in June, July specifically. So we've had a total of 160 cases. Out of the of those 160 cases, we had 146 people who were in the age category eligible for a vaccine, so 12 and older, right? So out of those 146 folks who were eligible for a vaccine and who became a case of COVID, we had 20% of those cases who were fully vaccinated, okay, and 80%, which vast majority, were not vaccinated. So as you can see, and we're going to talk about this a little bit later on, the Delta variant is more contagious and is able to break through our vaccines a little bit. But mostly, and the cases are within the folks who are not vaccinated yet. Interestingly, and it's a little bit concerning, we've had 10 people hospitalized over this June-July period. Two of them were vaccinated, eight of them were not vaccinated. Next slide, please. And if you look at those 10 hospitalized, 60% of them happened in July. Okay, so we had 10 over the June-July period, six in July. Out of those six, two in two were vaccinated. And interestingly, as well, in July, when you're looking at the breakthrough cases, we're having a little bit more. Our proportion is is kind of increasing as well, which is probably a sign that the Delta variant is is here. Next slide, please. Okay, so talking about the Delta variant, we learned quite a bit about it last week. And I'm sure a lot of people have heard of this information, but I just want to point out a few very important points in my in my opinion. So this is a variant of the COVID-19 virus that is three times more transmissible than what we've seen in the past. You know, CDC compared it to chickenpox. So pretty much what what you're looking at is we had early variants of COVID-19. If somebody got the virus, they were able to transmit it to about two to two and a half people. With this new Delta variant, pretty much the person is able to transmit from one person to eight people. And so then, you know, those eight people are going to also infect eight people, et cetera, et cetera. So that's that that can go pretty fast. As we know now, this is the dominant area in the country and in Oregon. As of last Friday, I believe the State House officer told us that Delta was now more than 80% of all cases reported in Oregon. The CDC told us all on Tuesday, I believe of last week or Wednesday, that what is happening now is that not only we're getting breakthrough cases, and this is this is not necessarily something to be alarmed by, you know, we knew that the vaccines were really, really, really good at protecting us against severe disease, against hospitalization, and against death. And but but some some virus can get through to some people, right? But what is very very important piece of information is that we didn't know until last week that vaccinated people who get infected with COVID can also transmit the virus to the level of what a person who is not vaccinated can. So this is, and the person doesn't have to be symptomatic to be able to to pass that virus along to others. The other thing we're learning about Delta is that the severity of disease seems to increase also for people who are getting this variant. Next slide, please. Okay, so you know, we also have information about how the vaccines that we have available to us are holding up with regard to this variant. So the data that is on this slide is data that is coming out of two studies that were performed for the Pfizer vaccine specifically, out of the UK and out of Israel. They're both locations have experienced the Delta variant, right? The difference between those two locations is in the UK, not only did they have vaccination in place, but they also maintained the mask mandate. Okay, and in Israel, they had vaccination in place, but they didn't maintain the mask mandate. So then, what researcher did is that they look at the vaccine effectiveness with Delta in both contexts. They, the vaccines in both contexts, both the UK and Israel, as you can see, maintain their efficacy against severe disease, which is extremely good news, very, very good news. However, you can see that they drop significantly against getting infected with the virus. It dropped 20 points, about like less, a bit less than 20 points in the UK, and then almost 30 points in Israel. And as you can see, the mask, if you keep your mask on while being vaccinated, you're reducing the the probability of being infected. Which is why the CDC and the Oregon Health Authority came came back last week with this with this new guidance and recommendation about recommending universal masking in public indoor setting. Because now we know that vaccinated people can transmit. And we also know that if we're not wearing a mask, we are going to be more more able to spread the virus around. Next slide, please. Okay, so the important steps to remember to protect yourself and your community or whoever you really care for. We still know getting the vaccine is the best prevention method against severe illness due to COVID, hospitalization, and death. Extremely important. Get your vaccine. We have plenty of vaccine available in Lincoln County. The vaccines are available at the pharmacies, at the primary care offices. We have specific mobile clinics that are going on in the Toledo area, Lincoln City area, and even more locations in the in the coming weeks. So really, do not hesitate. We have plenty of vaccines available. The other step that you can take to really increase protection is to wear a mask. Wear a mask in public settings indoor is the best non-pharmaceutical, which is means it's not a vaccine to prevent the spread of disease. And a vaccine and a mask together are doing a really good job. And now Lincoln County is considered a high transmission area for the spread of COVID yet again. We're we're back in it. And so this is where really like the vaccine and the mask is is highly recommended because of the, we have a solid community transmission at this time in Lincoln County and in the in the state overall. Next slide. Okay, should I pause here before I go with the vaccinations? Or would you like me to just go on and we do questions at the end?
I'm fine with going forward, but Commissioner Hall?
Yeah, let's let's go to the end and then have questions and discussion.
Okay, perfect. So you know, like, like I, like I said earlier, you know, Lincoln County, we've been doing amazing vaccinations as as shown by this data. We are, we increased a point over last week's number. So we are at 73.53% of folks who are eligible to get a vaccine vaccinated, which is really wonderful. And as you can see, our rates are matching very closely the state statewide vaccination rates. And this is data as of today. Next slide, please. All right, so this is our little vaccination by zip code, and we are still making progress. You know, there are definitely areas that that still need some work, but we are targeting clinics to those areas to really like bring the vaccine to communities that might not have necessarily access to to it. So we have events planned for Cletz, Penner Creek, Toledo Waterfront, Toledo Swap Meet, and then we have National Night Out at the Armory in Newport tomorrow. All of this information is on our website. So I would really encourage people to go and get it. And like I said, if you can go get to a pharmacy or to your primary care providers, they all have access to the vaccine as well and can provide you with this service. Next slide, please. All right, any questions?
I don't have any questions. Commissioner Hall?
You know, maybe an observation. I I'm just concerned about the public taking away the right message from this latest round of news that it's, I mean, Florence, would you say it's fair to say this isn't a dire situation yet? But at the same time, with the surge of Delta and the growth in cases, I mean, we want to encourage the public to take this seriously, that this is very real. Is that a fair characterization?
Yeah, I think really, you know, just if you look at the number of hospitalization in the month of July, we haven't seen a number like this in months. So six people in the hospital in in 30 days or 31 days is a big deal to me. You know, as I tried to show in the slide, we can, we can see how fast the 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 rise is occurring. And so this is, this is concerning. You know, I think the message is that I know it can be difficult to having to reverse back to consider, well, I thought I had done it everything, you know, I stayed home last year, I wore my mask, I got vaccinated, and this happens again. And and I totally understand, and I am with everybody. This is, this is frustrating. And I want to remind people that still this virus, even though we've been living with it for over a year now, it is still a novel virus. We're learning about it as we go. It's a virus that is so, so good at adapting to so, you know, to its new context, at possibly becoming, you know, possibly if this virus mutates again, you know, worst-case scenario is that it would be resistant to the vaccines we have. So right now is our opportunity to really really take a big stab at it and getting as many people as possible vaccinated. And and if you cannot get vaccinated, please wear a mask so that you limit the spread of this particular variant.
Another observation, and I just appreciate any response you have to this. I've been watching a lot of the national coverage on COVID and the rise of the Delta variant lately. And nationally, the last numbers I've seen were at just under 50% of the population nationally who are vaccinated. And Lincoln County and in Oregon were inching closer to three-quarters. And yet Oregon is still seeing a pretty dramatic surge as well, which at least I take as, and I hope other people will take as, the fact that we can't let down our vigilance yet.
Absolutely. I'm 100% with you, Commissioner Hall. You know, I think I would say better prevent than be sorry in the future, right? And we know how to. So this is also what is very important is that we know we have tools available to us now that we didn't have a year ago. You know, we have, we have three vaccines. There are places in the world where people, you don't have no access to to vaccine at this time. We we know that the mask is a very protective measure. So I very much encourage people to take this as as seriously as possible. I know it is. It's it's been hard. It's been hard. But we are in the summer. We have a lot of visitors, you know, coming also from maybe areas of the country that might not have vaccination rates as high as as we do. And as we are seeing now, Delta spreads extremely well in also vaccinated populations. So I think we need to to remain cautious and and then and then think about the fall and try to curb that rise prior to the fall and when we are going back indoors.
You know, if I may, Commissioner Hall, are you any other comments or thoughts?
Not right now.
Interject.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair. Yeah.
Thank you. You know, there are several things that have been mentioned that I think are important. And because I think they're important, I want to emphasize them again. Number one, I believe Florence, you mentioned the fact that you know, there's a lot of information out there and the information is changing. And you know, that's one of the the so-called reasons that the non-vaccinators or the naysayers say, well, you know, this is all a hoax because nobody knows what they're talking about, and they're always changing their minds. And you know, it's all a hoax. Well, au contraire. The virus is not going to respond to what we as humans think it should. The virus mutates, changes under reasons that we don't fully understand. And so our understanding of the virus is changing, and therefore the information that we're sharing in an effort to control or reduce. uh, control or reduce the pandemic changes. And so the, the exact reason that the information changing, uh, changes is driven by the fact that, uh, we don't fully understand the virus and yet we're still trying to deal with it on a daily basis. Um, and again, the, the best ways to deal with this pandemic, even though we're tired of it, is to get a vaccination and to wear a mask and to wash your hands and keep social distance. So, um, you know, it, uh, is frustrating for all of us, but it's the reality that we're dealing in. And the more we do to try to limit the spread of the virus, the better things will be as we continue to deal with it and the sooner we'll get to a situation where the pandemic is, is no longer a factor in our lives. So just some thoughts. Um, and with that, I guess, um, Florence, do you have anything else for us at the moment?
Yeah, I just wanted to just echo, uh, what you just said and, and tell you that this is, um, what's wonderful about data-driven decision-making, right? Is that we're looking, and this is what really public health is all about, is that we're looking at the data we're having available to us at a particular moment in time and we're able to possibly shift, um, you know, decisions based on that data, right? And, and this, those decisions are made, uh, with the, the, uh, the idea to protect the public health. Um, uh, as much as, as possible based on the latest, uh, information we have available to us. Absolutely.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Yes. Uh, Commissioner Hall?
Last week, uh, state leadership announced that, uh, a masking requirement would be, uh, reimposed in state buildings for all people, regardless of their immunization status. And they've also encouraged, uh, counties to do the same at the county level. And, uh, I know we've put in a request to staff to draft a potential ordinance, uh, accomplishing just that. And if you're agreeable, uh, I'm wondering if we could bring that up for review right now and possible action if we have a meeting of the minds on that.
Well, I think we have a meeting of the minds because I was going to say that I think we need to be proactive in trying to address the dramatic increases in cases. And we also as leaders, I think, need to make, uh, decisions that, uh, are in an effort to protect the health of our communities and our people. So I'm, uh, in favor of that. I actually have the draft ordinance in front of me and I think I would read it, uh, if that's okay with you, Commissioner Hall?
Certainly.
Okay, um, in the matter of establishing a face covering policy for employees and the general public who are inside of con- county buildings. Whereas there has been a recent surge of COVID nineteen cases across the country and the state and Lincoln, in cases across the country, the state and Lincoln County. And whereas the Delta variant of COVID nineteen virus is accounting for more than eighty percent of all cases reported in Oregon. And whereas the Delta variant of the COVID nineteen virus is known to be three times more contagious and to lead to more severe disease than earlier variants of the disease. And whereas fully vaccinated individuals are still protected against severe disease, hospitalization and death. And the current science shows they can transmit the virus to others and whereas vaccination is the most effective prevention measure against the virus and the wearing of universal face coverings in indoor public settings is the best non-pharmaceutical intervention to prevent the spread of the virus. And whereas the CDC and the OR- CDC, the, uh, and the Oregon Health Authority, OHA, have issued recommendations for the return to wearing face coverings in indoor public spaces in high transmission areas. And whereas Lincoln County is now considered a high transmission area as demonstrated by the rapid increase in cases in July twenty twenty-one, hundred and twenty-six percent increase between the first two weeks of July and the last two weeks of the month. And whereas county facilities are indoor public spaces, now therefore it is hereby ordered effective August fourth, twenty twenty-one. The attached face covering policy marked as Exhibit A and incorporated herein by reference is adopted as applied to the inside of county facilities. This order shall be in effect until further order of the board dated the second day of August twenty twenty-one. So that is the, uh, order that is, uh, been prepared and, uh, one that, uh, I think makes sense to me.
Mr. Chair, it makes sense to me also. I, uh, think the, uh, proposed effective date of Wednesday, August fourth is, uh, reasonable that this gives staff some time to, uh, coordinate and get signage up in, uh, county facilities. So if you're agreeable, I would like to make a motion to approve the proposed ordinance.
I would second that. And the other discussion, I'll also note that at first I thought, gee, maybe we want to implement this tomorrow, but, uh, it is three thirty-seven in the afternoon. So we'll give a day to get the messaging out and have it be effective on, uh, Thursday.
Actually, I believe it's Wednesday. Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, August fourth. So.
Okay, um, for discussion, this is, uh, Assistant Counsel Jerry, uh, Herbage. Could I mention just a couple of things?
Please.
Thank you very much, Chair and Commissioners. Um, so this was drafted at the request of the board. Um, you read the order portion attached is the policy. Um, the policy, uh, indicates a few things that I'd like to point out. It's, it's the policy that was generally used before. Um, it indicates that the council's office has the authority to revise the policy and develop implementation guides to carry it out. And that county departments and offices have the authority to enforce. Um, it has some, gives a general policy. Uh, again, August fourth is the date, has some definitions. Um, what it does too is it indicates that, um, the social distancing policy is still in place. Um, and, uh, basically there are some nuances to use of the face coverings. Uh, it indicates the circumstances when an employee would not be required to use that. That could be, for instance, if they're in their own office and the door is closed, that would be an example. It indicates that we will be distributing face coverings, um, and, um, see, there is an exception area. So accommodations are made under certain circumstances. An example would be children zero to four years of age. Uh, employees can request an accommodation to the personnel department. Uh, failure to comply with the policy can lead to corrective action, whether you are a member of the general public or an employee. We're gonna post this policy. I ran this by our new, um, uh, I call him Personnel Direct, uh, Director, but I think it's, what is it called? Human Resources Director now?
Will accept either.
Okay, and, uh, he was fine with it. That's David Collier. Um, I coordinated this with Health and Human Services, sent a copy to Kristen. Kristen actually wrote most of this, wrote this policy some time ago. Um, so, uh, I would ask the board to consider adopting that as you are. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. One thing I think is just, uh, I'd make one correction as this was just drafted in the title, which isn't really the substance. Let's use the word who are inside, uh, of county facilities. We use the word facilities instead of buildings throughout this. So I think we could make that correction.
All right, uh, any additional comments or thoughts, uh, Commissioner Hall? Again, I would emphasize that, uh, while we are, uh, may appear that we're reacting, uh, or taking action fairly quickly, there's a substantial history behind this uh, order and, uh, certainly, uh, past practices, uh, have been, uh, aligned with this order. So uh, with that, uh, I believe Commissioner Hall, you, uh, moved to, uh, adopt this order and I will second it. And, um, there's no more discussion. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
All right, that order is, uh, approved and, uh, will be effective August fourth. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I, I, I've got one other thing to propose if, uh, you're agreeable. Even though we already have the statements from Centers for Disease Control and Oregon Health Authority encouraging everyone to mask up in indoor public spaces. I, wondering if it would be helpful to work with, uh, public health staff to draft a statement to go out under the commissioner's names, uh, uh, also encouraging people to follow that guidance.
Uh, certainly makes sense to me. Um, so, uh, I would ask you to work with staff and, uh, see what, uh, can be prepared.
Okay, so Florence, is that something you and your team could take on in the next few days?
Absolutely. We'll be working on it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your leadership.
Not a problem. Thank you for the hard work of, uh, you, your staff, our volunteers and partners. The, uh, challenge continues.
Indeed.
All right, um, I will move on to the Echo Mountain Fire update and, um, Commissioner Jacobson is not present. Um, I'm not sure if there's anyone, uh, present to, uh, provide an update.
And Public Information Officer Casey Miller often, uh, presents part of the update, but he's not present as well.
Well, um, it's on the agenda and, uh, we'll have it on the agenda next week. Um, I think, uh, generally I know there continues to be progress. Uh, I know we're working on, uh, reimbursement from FEMA, have that, uh, situation nearly wrapped up. But I think the important thing is that those, uh, that have unfortunately, uh, experienced some loss due to the fire, um, uh, we're still aware of those, working to address those needs and, um, it's, uh, been darned close to a year now, but, uh, that situation is not, uh, being forgotten nor overlooked. So uh, more information next week. Um, Commissioner Reports, Commissioner Hall?
Uh, nothing today. Thank you.
I will note that, uh, we will be delaying the, uh, move to Wednesday Board of Commissioner meetings. Uh, the increase in COVID cases and the need to, uh, keep social distancing and wear masks, uh, is certainly part of that decision. So we will be continuing virtual meetings of the Board of Commissioners of Lincoln County on Monday at three PM, uh, at this time, uh, until, uh, a date to be determined in the future. So we will not be going to in-person meetings in, on August, uh, eighteenth. Um, and with that, um, if there's, oh, public comment, uh, do we have any public comment, Kristy?
We received one public comment.
And that was regarding the, uh, proposed closure of the South Beach Post Office.
Yeah.
Okay, there it is, um, noted and, uh, part of the record of the county. All right, if there is, uh, is there any other business to come before the board? All right, if not, uh, the next meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners will be on Monday, August ninth at three PM and, uh, we will be, that will be held virtually. And we will be holding an executive session at two PM on Monday, August ninth. That will also be held virtually. So until Monday, the ninth, uh, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.